With that, I have got seven o'clock. Let's call the meeting into order. Please join me for the political meetings. All right. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Henry.
President Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mac.
Present.
Councilmembers Sayer.
Present.
Councilmember McKnight.
Present.
Mayor Johnson.
Present. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for tuning into tonight's meeting. We value our residents and community members, and we want to make sure that anyone who wants to participate in providing input can do so. To provide input, join the meeting via Zoom conferencing services. Use the quick link button on cityofcarver.com. Information related to joining the meeting can be found by clicking on the meeting agenda. We ask that anyone wishing to address council wait to be recognized by the mayor. Be respectful. Wait for your turn to speak and don't speak over one another. Callers and folks on Zoom will still need to provide their names and addresses for the record. All right. With that, can I get a motion for the agenda?
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry, I'm going to give that one to Glenn.
I had coffee in my mouth, so I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion by councilmember Henry and a second by councilmember Mac. Any further discussion? All right. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mac.
Aye, Kristy Mac.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number four, community comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. This is the opportunity for the community to share their thoughts, questions, comments with council. Now would be the time to share those. Going once, going twice before we move on. Last opportunity to share one's thoughts. All right, moving on to item number five of tonight's agenda, 5.1, the JCP project construction update. Mr. Lannis.
All right, good evening. All right, not muted, right? Okay, can you hear me all right now?
More better.
Yeah.
Better? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. It's just a little soft, so if you feel the need to scream, tonight would be the time to do it.
I will talk. I will talk loud.
Thank you.
All right. Walk you through a few notes here. I just put it in a PowerPoint just to give you a few things to look at as I'm talking here, but intended to be an informal update, so look at this neat picture that Michael Jabs Inspector took over the weekend here. This is what they were doing when they closed the ramps at 212.
That's frugal. That's cool.
They had a big mess. This is why they closed it. So they're digging across JCP, and ultimately, I would have to say it went very well as ramp closures can go. So it went off as expected, and they got it done, and the work is complete. So just a few pictures of what's going on. You can drive it and see it yourself. But they're widening the highway in this area, looking over the bridge, finished product from the ramp closure. Some of the additional widening happened along the corridor. This is getting ready for the box culvert construction that is going to be a big topic of tonight for what's going to be happening this next weekend. But there, you can see they're lining up the sections of the box culvert that is going to be installed here very shortly. So key updates, the ramp closure went well. We only had two calls with the thousands of people that were impacted on that. That's, in our world, considered a success. Means a lot of people knew about it, and only a few were upset enough to call. Most people were relatively prepared for it, and although it was inconvenient, they knew about it. So that's what we consider to be reasonably successful. We expect it a lot more, actually. So full closure of JCP this weekend is the biggie, Friday to Monday. So this is notable. Night work is expected. We do expect some folks to be inconvenienced by this one here. If they're working late into the night, they're going to make some judgment calls about what they can get done on the weekend. They're going to try and get this done as quick as possible. If they have to work late into the night, they're planning on it. So we are prepping residents for the worst on noise through the night to the ones that are living nearby. On Monday, they're expected to be paving at one lane, traffic each direction. And notice about night work expectations forthcoming here. Most folks are already going to know about this from prior mailers, but trying to make sure everybody knows about the impacts going on at later hours here for noise. School underpass being coordinated with the school. I'll show you that in a second here. And then the next big moment after this weekend closure is the full closure of JCP, Ironwood 6th. And everyone's familiar with that. That's the big moment here when they close the road for a couple months. Then MINDOT is concerned about the project detour operations at 212 and 43. This is fairly new news, so there's going to be some reviews going on at the county and MINDOT about what to do about that intersection at 212 and 43. If they can't find a means to make that what they'd consider to be safe and functional for the duration of the detour, they might actually consider alternate detour routes. So I can't give you a whole lot more than that, other than they're running into some issues up at 212 and 43, and they're looking at it to determine whether or not they have to change course. So. Couple of communication updates. I know you don't see a lot of the stuff that happens in the background. Most folks are only going to be aware of what comes through the system as far as the frustrations and the concerns. But we do have a lot of stuff happening in the background. Forty-five hotline calls and emails that came in, and then attended to fourteen email blasts that have been sent to a large group of folks that have been signing up for the project updates. Eleven Facebook posts, ten notices, eight maps created, and then weekly updates on the website. We had one stakeholder meeting for businesses and one forthcoming here, and then a number of individual emails to directly impacted stakeholders. So we're pleased to say that the weekend closure went fairly well as far as the communications front. So upcoming communications, what's coming? Notice on night weekend work is coming for what to expect here. Coordination with the schools occurring by the county for the pet underpass. We're letting the school offer their comments directly on what is suggested by the contractor for work on the south underpass. And then there's a corridor stakeholder meeting occurring with the county. Shelby is the county construction manager and our communications lead, Nicole. And that is going to hopefully address some of the questions the businesses may have down at Sixth Street. For example, when the full closure is going to occur, and folks are going to have to get to those businesses, another route. Speed bumps, no, big question, keep, remove. Complaints have been received. We've gotten some complaints that they're noisy. Folks have been bottoming out. This is another one we've heard. The issue is right now is that also lends itself towards whether or not there's some evidence that it's doing its job. If people are ripping through the area a little bit fast, I mean, that's where you're going to start having issues with your car hitting these things. So they were put out, for one thing, because of cut-through traffic and managing speeds through these cut-through routes. So that was the point. Noisy is an impact of any of these speed bumps here. So before we get into a lot of discussion on this, I would just note that we are experiencing a lot of the cut-through traffic that we were expecting. And early on, that was the big concern, is fast traffic through neighborhoods, and so this was a result of that. The whole purpose of the speed bumps is anticipation for that traffic. We are seeing the cut-through traffic in a lot of it. That being said, we want to be respectful of the fact that if the cut-through is not as bad in certain areas, the speeds aren't as bad in some areas, we don't want to put them out there for no reason. So I think we're trying to balance this and take a look at what's actually happening out in the field and make some calls on whether or not we keep them or pull them. At this point here, I think it's definitely worth it to keep them through the weekend. We are definitely going to see more cut-through traffic as we close JCP this weekend. It's going to be all over the place, just like the last one. It'll happen again. I would say we would have to reevaluate if we want to sit tight and keep them in place until the full JCP closure. The reason being is you pay to pick them up and pay to put them back down again. We like them, and we want them up for the JCP closure. We could pick them up and put them back down when school's out in a month and a half. That being said, right now, we're going to go through the weekend and definitely reevaluate, see what makes sense as far as, if any of these aren't serving a purpose, I think the thing to do is to get rid of them. So right now, though, we are seeing a purpose for the amount of traffic that we're getting through the area. So the alternative to this is you post police officers for folks that are speeding through the area. That's also expensive and takes a lot of staff time from the police force. So. Upcoming communications with the school. County is working on some communications with June about this box culvert, when to extend it, where the kids are going to go, when this work is underway. He is reaching out directly with June, and we're going to defer to her thoughts on timing and a reasonable reroute for kids walking to school. So that is also happening. So I will open it up to any questions anyone has on any topic here.
All right. Let's see. Let's just do questions unrelated to speed bumps, because I think that's going to be a bigger discussion real quick. Dan, I'm just wondering, you mentioned night work is expected. Does that mean three shifts worth of folks this weekend? Or if it is 10 o'clock at night, and they think they have two more hours to go to get themselves that much further to a stopping point, they'll work for those two more hours?
I missed the first part of it. I heard the last part about two more hours.
Are they going to be working 24/7, or are they going to be just potentially working rather late until the evening past dark?
Because they have the flexibility to do that, we're going to prepare folks for 24/7. That being said, they generally don't go 24/7 with their operations, but the county has it set up so that they can work as much as they need to to get it done on the weekend.
Okay. My second question is, do we have a date for the full closure?
Well, right now, it's mid-June, I believe. It's as soon as school is out officially, so we're just going to defer to the school calendar. I don't have it right now in front of me.
School is finished on June 8th.
Okay, it'll be immediately after.
No extra days for teachers or anything? It'll be June 9th? That's close.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing isn't a question, it's just a comment. I think a lot of folks in Carver, myself included, were delighted that this last weekend's closure finished early. I think you had set us up. I was expecting, and from the way you laid things out two weeks ago, I was ready for the work to still be taking place right now. So really, good job at getting everything done a little bit ahead of schedule, so well done.
Well, tell the contractor. Thank you.
Pass it along. Any other non-speed bump related? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Joy.
Thank you.
Glenn sitting here shaking his head like there's an intruder coming into the building, but he was trying to nod to draw my attention to you, which I completely missed, so I am sorry. Go ahead.
So Dan, a question on your comment about MINDOT having concern about 212 and 43. Can you elaborate a little bit more? Is it because they're starting their 212 expansion project?
That's a good question. Right up here, there's a lot of lefts coming down 43. That intersection wasn't in great shape to begin with as far as operations. And so now they've got all that additional traffic that's trying to make lefts against 65 mile an hour high-speed traffic gaps.
Ah, yes.
They're concerned about safety and operations just with the additional traffic load, so that is the answer, yeah.
Okay, so, but they knew about this project, right? They reviewed all of this?
They did, but MINDOT's a big operation, a big machine of a lot of people and a lot of opinions, and every once in a while, the reviewer that reviewed it is different than the person complaining about it, and different people start talking, and here we are.
Okay. All right. Okay. That answers my question. That was my only non-speed bump related comment.
Yeah.
Anybody else before we open the speed bump? Okay. I really thought, I didn't know what you were mentioning.
It's fine.
I thought there was like a big speed bump. I don't know. Speed bumps, thoughts, questions, comments? Go ahead, Glenn.
I like them. I've heard a lot of stuff from many people that they were really upset about them, and I said, okay. How many times did you go over them? They sped the first time, like I did. I was doing 20 when I went over the first time, not the second. All it took was once, you learned your lesson, and you go over them slow. I think they're great. They do their job. They slowed everybody down, and I think they're awesome.
I don't know that I think they're awesome.
I do.
Share the like 14 on a scale of 1 to 10 enthusiasm for them, but I do think that they're great and that they're... You guys, it was this council that wanted, that asked for the speed bumps. You know, we knew this construction project was going to be hard. Pick your hard complaints about folks speeding through your neighborhood or complaints about the speed bumps. I think that they serve a role. I know that we have a plan to add more. I didn't, I heard complaints from one person, and I heard from probably two or three folks who are asking, when do we get one on my street? I want to have one here, you know, let's put them in in other places. Because literally, you have to slow down. I live on a corner. People, we all know, people don't stop, probably all don't stop, for every single stop sign, but these really force you to slow down. So I'm team, I'm on Glenn's team of being just fine with the speed bumps.
When I still see 45, 50, 55 on Sixth Street, bring in the speed bumps.
That was the street that the neighbors asked about.
Well, it's... Like I said, they hit it the first time, they're like, oh, boy. And then, you know, as councilpeople, we hear about it, we hear about the speeding through town. Okay, so what do you do about it? So if we finally do something about it, we got this construction, we have all these people using alternate routes, and they're buzzing through town, and now there's speed bumps. So we hear that, oh, now we got these speed bumps, and that's a bad thing. They're yelling at you about speed bumps. I'd rather have them slow down and hear about that than I would about having them flying through town willy-nilly at every intersection. It's, I think, that's one way we're going to control the traffic. I've heard people that, well, why don't they put stop signs up here, there, the other... You got a stop, stop sign?
You should.
It's, you'd think so, but...
You would think they don't.
It's, I think they're awesome.
All right, well, I have a couple of people who didn't think they were awesome contacting me this over the weekend, so I probably had no less than 12 people come and have something to say about it. What some of those comments were is that, because they are, it is an aggressive bump rather than being kind of, I guess, the rounded half dome, and I think that's what people were probably expecting when we talked about putting the speed bumps in, is that's a little bit more typical than this. I did hear a comment about the one that is heading out of town towards Chaska, that it's placed actually in the 50 mile an hour zone rather than the 30, and that maybe it would be, it would be better if it was placed back a little bit to 30, because if people are coming down from 50 miles an hour, they're already going to be slowing down to the 30, so it's going to be, they're going to be slowing down even more, rather than coming from 50 to like, oops, I'm going to be going 5. So I think that might be, there might be an opportunity there to pull it back a little bit so that, you know, the reduced speed is already there before they get to it. Glenn, you keep wanting to say something to me.
Yeah, the only reason I say I like where it's at there is, did you see the line of traffic coming into town on Friday afternoon?
No.
There was, oh, there was a line of traffic past the park out there. It was, and so if people come into town at 50, they're going to slow down. But that made them slow down to prepare themselves, because the line of traffic at this intersection went back and wrapped around 40 already.
Sure.
So it's slowing them down.
It is, and I'm not, and it better be slowing them down. I don't know how they'd get through it without slowing them down. But maybe it's something to look at as to where the miles power section that it's in, so that you're not going from 50 to 5, you're going from 50 to 30, then right to 5. That was one comment that I heard. Another comment that I heard was the longevity, right? So when are they getting picked up, and when are, how long are they going to be here? So I think that's a big question that most people had, because a few people came up and said, I can't believe you put these in forever. And, you know, they're not forever.
Get used to them.
Yeah. But the other comment that I have is that if we are not going to, after this weekend, if we are not going to have traffic rerouted through downtown until June, do we pick them up for that month since they, or roughly a month, since there won't be technically any reason to have that, as traffic's not rerouted the same fashion because it's not closed? So those are just things I would like the council to maybe roll around here, and maybe we can talk about that. Because those were the, besides some complaints, but those were like the really constructive things that came out of some of the conversations I had over the weekend. So I think it's worth us talking about.
Joy?
All right, yeah, I agree that the speed bumps are the right traffic calming measure for those cutting through residential and downtown to avoid the closure area. I think it's more effective and less costly than putting a deputy at every Fourth Street, Sixth Street downtown area. So I do think they are very effective during the closure. I want to echo a comment Councilmember Mac made about County Road 40. I think I mentioned this during our last update about concerns about the speed limit on County Road 40, coming in and out of town being 50 or 45, and then having a speed bump. So if we do plan to keep speed bumps for the summer closure, I would suggest that we try to either work with the county on better placement of those closer to where the speed limit is lower or ask that a temporary 30 mile per hour speed limit be put on that entire length between 61 and Jonathan Carver Parkway. Something like that. I think that would be a good compromise. Keep the speed bumps, but lower the overall speed limit. The other thing, I guess, I'd like us to consider as we move forward is the communication about the speed bumps, right? I mean, people are going to notice that they're still out there, because we have another closure, but I think we got to prepare weak people for the six-week closure over the summer and say, there are alternatives, detours that do not have speed bumps. If you don't want to drive over a speed bump, take the detour. And get people prepared to start doing that versus just continuing to cut through town. I mean, I realize that not 100% of residents are going to be able to avoid all the speed bumps, but for those that are either coming from the south, like my neighborhood or Chaska and kind of going through town, get used to taking the detour. And I don't know how we communicate that. I don't know if we have more signage, but just to maybe, maybe with communication on signage, we need to say, hey, if you continue on this road, it's going to be lower speeds or speed impacted or traffic congestion or something, and here's the better route of a detour. I don't know. But something along those lines.
Just a follow-up. So Nicole and Shelby and I talked a little bit about communication of the speed bumps, and our plan was to wait until the council could weigh in tonight, and then we put together a plan of how to communicate this, when they're going to be out there, how long they're going to be out there. The comment that Councilmember McKnight made about alternate routes, it just piqued an interest, because I had someone ask me if there's a route that they could take to avoid the speed bumps. And I was hesitant to like share that, because then all of a sudden, that becomes the unofficial detour, and then we're kind of in the same position that we're in now. So if I said, take X Street to Y Street, you know, then as things go, just based on other construction projects, we have the residents along X and Y Street, they'll start calling. So this is something to throw out there back at the council for some conversation.
And Joy, I wanted to say, thanks, Brent, because that's actually what I was thinking. I like where you're going with it, but I think then, again, you start to have the unofficial route, and then that defeats the purpose of having those speed bumps out there. I know you talked about maybe lowering the speed. I don't know that, for me, that I think that is the choice I would look at. I do think maybe moving that speed bump into the, moving them into maybe a different location where it's already a slower speed might be a good option.
Yeah, either or. I suggest we look at it, because I agree there is a conflict between speed bump and a speed limit of 50. That's challenging.
Yeah. We agree.
Okay.
No, thanks, Dan, for agreeing on that, because that was one of my points, is maybe move that speed bump on 40, 61, closer to downtown. 40, sorry. You know, I was like, wait, then I said 41, so yes, so thank you, and 40 closer to downtown, so just moved a little south. But otherwise, yes, I've got some feedback to, not well liked, this speed bumps, but they are incenting that behavior to slow down and incenting that behavior to please use the detours.
If I'm not mistaken, the placement of the one on 40 there is to alleviate the people from hitting the Sixth Street East at a higher rate of speed, because isn't it just north of the East Sixth Street 40 intersection there?
I thought it went to 30 before that. So you would already be in the 30.
You're doing, yeah, you're doing 30 there.
Okay, then I'm guessing I'm not understanding what you mean.
Where Sixth Street cuts over to Mount Oak. That speed bump is prior to that. And I think it's right on the edge of the 30 mile an hour zone.
It could be moved a little closer to that intersection.
Okay.
Do we want to pay to move it?
No.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Yeah.
I don't think we do. I just, you know, those things are anchored in there. I don't want to keep, you know...
Well, what kind of cost are we looking at, first of all? I mean, is it $1,000? Is it $10,000? Is it $100?
Is there a ballpark number, Mr. Lannis?
Oh, for moving one is probably in the hundreds. The bigger issue is if we take these down for the next six weeks, you know, that's in the thousands.
Let's tackle that.
Take them down and then reset them up again.
Moving that speed bump is not the hell I'm going to die on. Was it speed bump?
I was just going to do it.
That didn't even bring a grin.
Glenn, Ralph, Brett's not going to talk. I lost my, oh, so let's talk about duration. I am fine with keeping them up. I think that these habits are forming, and quite frankly, I think that it's not fair to pull them and then have them pop up again in June. I get it that they're an inconvenience, but again, to kind of what Joy said, it's the traffic calming mechanism. We're going to have folks cutting through downtown all summer, and I think that they need to stay up for better or for worse through the complete reopening of Jonathan Carver Parkway when it reopens in September, when the school's back in session. Who wants to go next?
I will. I think they should stay up the whole duration. When it comes around to forming habits, they say it takes 60 days for habits to be formed. If you leave them up for the duration, maybe people will slow down after they're eventually taken out, too.
Thank you. Joy, you look like you're thinking.
Yeah, I also support not moving them. Let's change behavior. Behavior takes some time to change, and if people go, oh, these might be staying, I maybe ought to change my habits or rethink my commuting patterns.
Kristy? I think that they should come out for that month while they're not in use. Um, it doesn't seem to be the popular opinion on most of the council, so, um, I mean, that's fine. That's, that's where I'm at with it. I don't. Um, sorry about the little distractions. Um, anyway, so I, I would prefer that it came out for that month. I think if the majority of the council looks at keeping them until the end of the project, I think that that should be well communicated then, that that is the time when we're looking for. Um, it, because otherwise it's just speculation and I did a little speculate this weekend, so I have to go back and, and let people know that I was incorrect about a few things. Uh, so anyways, that's where I stand. I would prefer that they come out. If the rest of the council, um, doesn't agree, then it looks like we'll go another route.
And just to be clear, I think they come out as soon as the part shut down. And it's not November when everything's done and buttoned up. Um, I, I don't wanna keep them in there any longer than we have to, but I don't. I, I don't, I don't think it's fair to pull them and to have, you know, we'll probably have the same issues that we're trying to solve for. And then to put them back in, that just seems almost unfair and almost cruel.
I can already hear the phone calls. Just as soon as we got rid of them, they're back again.
Yeah. Yeah, I, um, other than the one that should be moved south, um, I would keep them until the dates that we've established.
Okay. So I hear consensus that they're gonna stay up throughout.
Just for some, just to help us understand, were the comments that the council received related to this primarily for County Road Forty as opposed to Spring Creek Drive?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, cause I think at a minimum, and I think Dan alluded to this, we can connect, so obviously Spring Creek Drive is a city street and Forty is a county road. So we can have a conversation with Shelby and talk about the council's concerns about maybe adjusting that, that there's some safety issues that they didn't think of. But the second point I'd like to make is we do have kind of an auxiliary or secondary plan as it relates to Fourth Street, Sixth Street, Violet Parkway and Mount Oak Road. Should there be concerns about cut, cut through traffic? And so rather than having that at the risk of making this more complicated, I just wanted to make sure that, um, kind of just leaving it with Dan, the city engineer, if, if it's found that those that were experiencing heavy traffic, heavy cut through speeds, that you, you know, give Dan the ability to, to place those in those locations if, if warranted. Just wanted to check in in advance, I guess.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up next. I am completely fine and I'm confident in Dan's decision-making that when it seems like, I, I anticipate it's gonna happen. I think if we close the road on June ninth, it's gonna happen on June tenth. Know later that we start seeing folks who live in Carver know their way around and can cut through all the pathways. And I think that we need to kind of go with phase two of the speed bump.
Joy, I saw you shaking your head. Lori?
No, I had the same, that I said earlier.
Sixth street.
So I have a question. Um, what, what will trigger if warranted? Um, we're just gonna notice it? Is it gonna be, are we gonna have an officer out at certain times to see if it's warranted or how are we gonna measure warranted?
I defer to Dan, um, his rationale, I would say though, but prior to, uh, doing the speed bumps, we would notice folks. We did that prior to these being installed. We would do the same way. Wouldn't just show up. We would say, you know, next week, expect, you know, these to be installed in these locations. But I defer to, to Dan. Would you mind sharing your perspectives on, on when you'd consider that change?
Sure. Yeah, what we're looking for is a substantial, uh, volumes of cut through traffic that looks like it's in a hurry. So, I mean, that's, that tends to be the issue. They're not really driving, they're not driving.
Is that your technical?
Fuck engineer to us, Dan.
Well, yeah, it's tech, technically speaking, that's the warrant. We look for crazy drivers. Uh, to put it simple, uh, because they're not respectful of the area. They're trying to get through and it's, it's very obvious. And at that point, you've, you've got two options. Again, you've got an officer out there or you, you put this out there. So it gets to the point where it's consistent and we're seeing it, uh, and expected on a regular basis, that would be the judgment call.
So we'd, we'd, uh, connect with Deputy Sandberg, he does, he, or Deputy Prefer on that too. It'd be probably a combination of, if we start with some enforcement, you know, and then if that's just overwhelming, that's, you know, calls on Six, calls on Mount Oak Road, calls on Fourth. And we'll have an ongoing conversation with the council on it. And I, I wouldn't expect them to show up all at once, but if it may be they were having trouble on Six, if we can't rectify this, we'll probably develop a communication on speed bump on Six.
Okay, thank you. Yep, that's good. Thanks.
And I'm fine with being more aggressive than that. If they all need to go up at a moment's notice, that just tells me that's will.
All it takes is once.
Yeah. Um, but I, I'm comfortable leaving it up to Dan and Deputy Sandberg and everybody else who's got a better eye for that kinda thing than I do. Um, is there any other, we done talking about speed bumps? Okay. Um, Dan, do you need anything from us?
No, that was good discussion and, uh, you answered the biggie, is, uh, we take them down for six weeks. So no, that's, that's the answer I needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, right, moving on to item number seven, the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Henry.
Second.
And a second.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, just excited. Uh, and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? Uh, right, could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristy Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes unanimously. On eight point one, Timber Creek, the preliminary plat, Ms. Smith.
Sorry, I was muted. I suspect you can see my screen. How's the volume?
Uh, good.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight we are reviewing a preliminary plat application for Timber Creek, which is a project that is being developed by, um, Summer Gate. Proposed builder, Lennar. Number of units, three hundred and forty-eight. A mix of seventy-four townhomes, two hundred and seventy-four single-family homes, which is a mix of both sixty and sixty-five foot wide lots. I'll get into some of that nitty-gritty later, but just some fast facts. And I'm going to talk through some pretty important details that we've been working on at a staff level, but also a council level, so important things for this project. The extension of Monroe Drive, expansion of Ironwood Park and a trail and sidewalk system. Before I get terribly far into my presentation, I'm going to ask that Casey with Summer Gate introduces himself, um, gives a little bit of background about Summer Gate and maybe a little bit about the project before I steal all of the thunder.
Hi, this is, uh, Casey Walshleger. I work with, uh, Summer Gate Development. Uh, we're a local land development company based out of Lakeville. And, uh, we've been working with, uh, the Song family that owns the land for Timber Creek the last couple of years, kinda working through the, the project, the staff. And we appreciate their help and, and, and definitely, uh, appreciate the city of working with us to try to work through COVID and all the other issues to, to get to this point. Uh, we, we're also working with, uh, Lennar to, uh, bring the product types and, and similar things that they, they have in their neighboring project right, right down the street here. And, uh, we're really excited to see the, the project move ahead. We, we think we've, uh, kinda worked with, uh, the, the county and everybody to realize a, a lot of cool aspects to the project and obviously to the expansion of Carver itself. And that's it for me right now.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it looks like Casey and then a few members from the development team from Westwood are on the call. So if we have any technical comments, I'll probably defer to either them or Dan for engineering-related. But let's get through some details of the project first. So you see this slide pretty often. It's how I define the roadmap of the projects that we're working on. So you'll see through the steps that we've taken so far, the city council has reviewed a concept plan for this project. We reviewed an environmental assessment worksheet or an EAW. Based on the project size that was required day one. So an EAW was required to look at, um, both the build and natural environment for the site. So if you'll remember, we looked at things like the type of species of animals that live there, traffic, noise, pollution. It gives us a full view of what a project will do, both to existing conditions as well as future. So we reviewed, uh, the EAW. Something to note, I don't suspect any of you remember this one comment that we received, but the state historic preservation office required an archaeological survey to be completed prior to preliminary plat approval. That has been processed by that office and we are set to go with preliminary plat at this time. This project additionally required annexation and here we are tonight at preliminary plat. So I talked through these details, um, pretty quickly and I like to think that we cover enough of the issues at a staff level that we don't need to get into the nitty-gritty. But I just want to say the amount of time that we spent with the development team and then our team internally at a staff level, we've worked really hard on this project, so I'm going to go over some of the big changes. But I just, um, I just wanna make a point to say that our engineering team has been working really hard on this project and I think we're coming up with a gr- really great product based on feedback from all interested parties. So, uh, you'll see on the roadmap that notification was required. The planning commission held the required public hearing. I'll talk about that a little bit later in the slides. So tonight, we're reviewing again preliminary plat for Timber Creek. So the overview of the project, some of the pretty pictures that we see. This, um, illustration has been really helpful in conversations, both at the council level, but also with residents. It takes some of the really technical planning information out of the picture and it shows sidewalk and trail plan along with some, uh, Ironwood Park expansion project and just lays out the lots really nicely. So we've been using this pretty heavily at a staff level, just as an information piece. So the overview of the project. We're located west of Carver Elementary, south of Highway two twelve, south of D R Horton, the Meridian Fields project. Uh, generally, um, west of Oak Tree and now this is our westerlymost property line since we've moved forward with annexation. The area is guided for single-family residential and the comprehensive plan, which is project meets. We'll talk through density next. So working through some of the details, we are not reviewing rezoning tonight, but it's something that comes pretty naturally with from preliminary plat as we start talking through these details. So at a future date, likely with final plat, we'll move forward with a rezoning request. The rezoning request will be to R two or residential two with a planned residential development or a PRD overlay. So thinking through what that R two zoning district is, it's Meridian Field, it's Oak Tree, it's Copper Hills. So it's a mix of the projects that are directly adjacent to this property. And you might be asking, why a PRD? Why is it important to have that planned residential development overlay district? And that comes into play when there's a mix of housing types. So like I mentioned previously, it's a mix of townhomes and single-family. So at that point, it doesn't fit in one zoning dis- district naturally. The PRD allows us to essentially create a zoning district specifically for this project. Something that we've worked really hard on with this project is some preservation. So you'll see, uh, highlighted that forty percent of the gross site area will be reserved in open space. A lot of this is a ravine, areas that we are not able to build on. But we've come up with a couple of solutions to highlight these features, to make them part of the project instead of a hindrance of an area that we can't build on. And then a breakdown of the lot tapes. So again, I, uh, mentioned before, it's seventy-four townhome units, one hundred and seventeen, uh, sixty-foot wide lots and one hundred and fifty-seven sixty-five foot, well, sixty-five foot lots. Uh, similar project, Oak Tree, has a mix of both those sixty and sixty-five along with the villa product. Something that is really important that we need to always remember is that the Met Council is always looking for a net density across the entire city of Carver to be three units per acre. We can go higher than that, which is fantastic, which then allows us to go a little bit lower on other projects if there are some challenging areas. But this project hits right at three, so it's the magic number that we're generally looking for. The comprehensive plan calls for three to five units per acre, so this project again meets the intent of the city's adopted comprehensive plan. The proposed lots hitting close to that R two district are about eight thousand to eight thousand five hundred square feet. So again, similar to projects in the general area. Setbacks for the houses, twenty feet for front, seven point five for side and twenty for rear. Again, meets the intent of our R two zoning district. So when I talk through the flashy changes, I want to talk through them a little bit more in detail. So things that have changed since we've last talked about this project at concept plan. And this is some of the nitty-gritty that we've gone back and forth with the development team quite a bit. Brent, do you need something?
I'm sorry, Erin, I'm. Just, sorry, we're doing logistics here so that we can see the presentation a little bit better on the, our screens. Sorry for the interruption.
Is there anything I can do? Are you good now?
You're good. You can go ahead.
Okay. So I have some areas on the screen that are circled in red right now, or things that look significantly different than they did at concept plan that I would like to talk through. So starting with the northerly most circle, you'll see that the townhome area looks significantly different than it did originally with the concept plan. Concept plan had a cul-de-sac, which, um, to be super frank and honest, I wasn't the biggest fan of. Uh, and we were able to work through and make it a private street that each townhome would have direct access off a street as opposed to a cul-de-sac. Also, a little bit helpful for maintenance, that these streets go private since they're part of townhomes, so an HOA will be responsible for the streets in that area. Another change next to the townhomes is, uh, park expansion. So we are tasking the Parks Commission to think about this area as an expansion to Ironwood Park. So what park features might be included in the future in this area? And then you'll see that in the concept plan, parking for the park was off Monroe Drive. We flipped it now to Ironwood, largely due to grades on Monroe Drive. It's really steep in that area. So hopefully more successful off Ironwood Drive, also understanding right now that people park on Ironwood right now to access Ironwood Park. So we thought that that was a more natural area for it. And then the third, when this project came in at concept plan, there was some conversation about, uh, potentially having estate lots or lots that were larger with some really fantastic views, but would require well and septic connections as opposed to city sewer and water, which the city does not permit. So based on the grades and elevations, those lots were no longer feasible with the grades that were there. So you'll see that the area, um, the southwest corner of the project has changed to be more of a loop as opposed to streets that could connect in the future.
Erin, as long as we're on this slide, could.
Let me go back.
As you change to the next one. The, the first circle at the top, um, where we're looking at the townhomes, I see that we have two, is it two entrances? And then the last one that's closest Prospect Lane, it looks like, that's closest to Monroe Drive. Um, that one does not lead out to the road. Can you talk to why that one has just the trail connection and, and doesn't lead out the way the other two do?
I can, yes. So, uh, we classify streets in this project as either a collector or a residential street. And the way that we handle development off this two types of street is really different. So if you think about streets like Monroe, we don't typically allow driveways to come off that street. When we started planning, um, Copper Hills and then this project, streets like Ironwood and Boulder are classified as collector streets. Um, so having the people be able to get off of the street quickly and into the development to pull traffic off Monroe and Ironwood is really important. So we found a good compromise with this group to be able to preserve portions of Boulder and Ironwood. So it's a little bit tricky because there are some driveways existing on Boulder today. So we were able to find compromise that the first areas of Boulder, which is the north-south. Can you see my cursor running on this screen? Perfect. So the north-south street here and then the east-west here did not have driveways for a portion of it. So it feels a little bit more like a collector, makes it an entrance into the project, gets traffic off those two collector roads quickly without having driveways interfere with that. We found that if Prospect were to connect onto Boulder that close to Monroe, it likely would be a headache for all parties involved. So it was the most effective to have the two entrances for, uh, the townhome area a little bit further south, a little pulled back a bit from Monroe to hopefully make traffic patterns flow more easily and more effectively in those areas.
Okay, thank you for that explanation and I do like the way the other roads are positioned and I think that's the right choice, obviously. It would probably cause some backups, but thanks for explaining that.
Sure, and I'll also mention that the trail connection onto Boulder will be used for the fire department. So there will be knockdown bollards in that space. So should they need to access any of those townhomes, a fire truck would be able to use that trail access to quickly get in there for safety instead of having to move, uh, further south on Boulder and then go into the townhome area. So an option for the fire department to use that trail. So moving into, uh, away from the pretty picture into kind of the nitty-gritty preliminary plat. This is the document that gets recorded. This is the document that shows us the lot layouts, shows us the required easements, street widths. This is the document that kind of becomes the, um, This is the document that kind of becomes the overarching document for the project that we can go to and say, this is what was approved when we look at surveys to make sure that the easements are correct. And this becomes the document that we use for final plat too. So you'll anticipate seeing this version likely again when we move through final plat. So this project is so large, it requires two pages. So page one on the screen now and page two. You'll notice on this one, you'll see what we call a ghost plat. So we talk about that pretty often in areas where certain parts of a project are not being developed, but we anticipate them in the future. Something that was, we needed to think about pretty specifically in this area was that White Pine Way leads its way through Oak Tree. We anticipate that it will continue through Finkel and that it will continue into the Timber Creek project. So this was good planning that we recognized White Pine Way would traverse Finkel. So addressing was going to be a little bit tricky and the street name shouldn't suddenly change when it crosses into the Timber Creek property line. So hence why we asked the developer to do a general ghost plat of this area so we could get a feel to see what it might look like in the future so we can continue White Pine Way through the rest of the project. So big questions about this project were phasing. What's it going to look like day one? What's it going to look like year seven? What's important in phase one of the project? So outlined in red right now is the phase one of the project. So you'll notice that it's a little bit different where Monroe Drive goes directly straight west to the property line in phase one. So that was important for a couple of reasons. For this project to happen, we need to ensure that Monroe Drive will be constructed to the full westerly property line. There's also a project just north of this happening. So the Hammers property, which we believe will be called the Preserve moving forward, needs access of Monroe Drive to get to this property. So the two development teams needed to work closely together. You'll see that Monroe Drive encroaches on the Hammers property. So at the time of this review, we needed to have signed easements by the Hammers property to be able to move forward with this project. Something interesting about phase one that we heard a lot about in some neighborhood meetings in the Planning Commission was its connection into Copper Hills. When was that going to happen? You'll see in this phase one right now that there will not be connection to Copper Hills during the first phase of construction. That comes a little bit later. Phase one includes all townhome units, so 74 townhome units, 49 single-family lots. So those are the ones that would be marketed likely after construction. Thinking about what that looks like moving forward, the development team has put together a full phasing plan. So I'll talk through the different colors. So outlined in orange is phase one or the 74 townhomes, the 49 single-family or 123 total units. Phase two is in yellow and this is when we connect into Copper Hills. So you'll see that that is where some of the backyards start to meet up and the streets start to continue. Phase two is 106 homes. Phase three is in green, 66 homes. And phase four is 53. So ending the project closer to the southwest area of the property. So through this project, we've had quite a bit of feedback and dialogue with interested parties. We thought at staff level it was important to get the Copper Hills residents in for their own meeting since it would so directly impact their property, their neighborhood. So we had a neighborhood meeting with that group. We had about 25 residents that joined us via Zoom. Big questions from that group were phasing of the project, just knowing timing of when the vista of their backyard might change pretty drastically. And then the next question was how the elevations tie into existing property lines. So it can feel, I suspect, pretty scary to hear that a new project is going to be right behind your house. And we worked through residents, worked through with residents on a pretty one-to-one basis to say, this is exactly what your yard is going to look like. This is what the grading will be. So a big shout out to the developer and the development team for doing some onsite meetings with residents that had some follow-up questions. And then timing of the development was big for the Copper Hills group. We held the Planning Commission meeting with the required public hearing on April 19th. We had quite a few people both on Zoom and in the room, which was an adventure for me, but I think we got through it okay. We heard a little bit about some runoff and erosion issues and concerns that property owners had west of the property and then south of the property. So a couple of residents spoke at the public hearing, requested some additional follow-up with our engineering team. Our engineering team was able to, I believe, come to a consensus with the residents, did a site visit and will continue to work through the process with that resident. If there's specific questions, I will defer to Dan and Erin who completed the site visit. The Planning Commission also heard some information about the park amenities in the project. Just wondering what they're going to look like. We talked through the trail, which I'll go through with you on the next slide. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of this project on a five to zero vote. So let's talk through some of what I think are the fun parts of the project. So trail and sidewalk, I think, have always been really important to the Planning Commission, Parks Commission, City Council. So we've worked really hard to develop a trail and sidewalk system that works effectively for this project and also works effectively for Carver Elementary. So knowing that the students that live in this project are in the walk zone, it was important that residents can feel like their kids can safely get to Carver Elementary. But also we recognize that this project has some unique amenities that we should probably capitalize on if we could. So I compared the trail system in this project really similarly to that of Hawthorne Ridge. So it would not go out there anticipating that the trail will always be groomed and in really great shape along the ravine. But it is an area that you get some unique views that you don't get in Carver right now. So you'll see the yellow line that begins in Ironwood Park, ties into our existing trail system, carries through the development and into a ravine trailhead. So the area here, there's a pretty natural trail area. Staff walked it last fall with the development team. We anticipate doing that again this spring. But there is just a really natural trail that we found to be important to this development, but also our greater trail system. So being really thoughtful about this area, but then also tying in sidewalks. Some of that more typical commuter traffic generally uses a sidewalk where this trail is more of a destination. Again, I mentioned that there's an expansion to Ironwood Park expected. The Parks Commission will be tasked with working through some of those details. And then the third big thing that I mentioned was the expansion of Monroe Drive to the westerly property line. Moving into some final details about the project, the landscape plan, I think, is always something that is accessible for a group to be able to say. It's always a bummer when any trees are removed, but this is something we can look forward to. So as part of the tree survey, it's anticipated that 471 trees will be removed. Based on our city code at that point, just based on our landscape requirement, no trees were required. So based on the property size and the number of trees, they were not required to replace anything, but based on other sections of our code, they are. And in turn, they will be planting 1,048 additional trees. So those will be a combination of lot trees. So you'll see throughout the project that there are specific plantings for each lot. But then we also have worked with the development team to make some of the areas coming into the project feel a little bit more like a parkway. So Monroe Drive continues landscaping along to the westerly property line. There's some buffering completed along Copper Hills and additionally Ironwood. So something that I think is always a sad day when you see trees start to go down, but it's always exciting when there is something in the future to look forward to, like a pretty robust landscaping plan with this project. On the screen now are some examples of the Lennar products that we could anticipate to see in the project. So you'll see the townhomes that are anticipated as well as a mix of the single-family homes, again on those 60 to 65-foot wide lots. They are really similar to the Oak Tree product. So if you've been through that project recently, I would anticipate you start to see some of the same elevations, the same garage with the two plus one and then the townhomes, which will be a new product. The addition of the 74 townhomes in Carver will be joining our existing 203. So a pretty significant bump in our townhome inventory. At this point, I'm going to open it up because I feel like I just gave you a ton of information. And I will ask any questions of the group. Again, Casey is here with Summer Gate, a couple of members from D.R. Westwood and then obviously Dan and Erin from our engineering team.
All right. Joy, do you have any questions? Do you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first. Just a couple of comments. I appreciate Erin, you pulling the number of existing townhomes. My, I was curious as to how much we were adding because it's been a while since we've added townhomes to our city. So I'm excited that we're adding this significant amount more. I like that that creates some more diversity. I also really have to commend staff for working with residents on this development since it's adjacent to a lot of existing homes. So really appreciate all the effort that was made in communication and working with residents to hopefully make this a smooth addition and smooth and nice neighbors for our existing neighborhood. I also like that you emphasized the landscaping plan. I did take notice that, you know, for this large size of a property, I mean, it was less than, what was my math, less than a quarter of the existing trees were being removed, but we're adding over 1,000 new trees. So I really appreciate all of the the extra landscaping that's being added. I think Monroe Drive is going to be beautiful. So just some nice comments I wanted to make. I did have a question and I know Planning Commission or Parks Commission has got to figure out the addition to the Ironwood Park. I know that we've talked about adding lighting to some of those park fields. And since we'll have townhomes that will be directly adjacent to that property and a parking lot there, I guess I would just like to consider the lighting plan and just make sure, you know, we consider the impact to the adjacent townhomes. That would be my only comment. That's it.
All right. Then you want to go?
I did have a conversation with one of the local affected the adjoining landowner on the south side. And I just want to make sure that, well, Dan, in our brief conversation, that Summer Gate and the development team are well aware of that issue regarding Outlot, was it C area or Outlot F area? But I think Dan and I, I think we pretty much, that's going to be down the road. That's what, the third or fourth phase of the construction? So there's time to handle it, but other than that, I think it's a great project.
All right. Yeah, I had some questions for Mrs. Smith. And part of it is, so I'm looking at the setbacks. I'm not a fan of the seven and a half feet side setbacks. So Erin, is that just part of our R2 or was there a variance?
The 7.5-foot setback is our R2 zoning code.
Okay, all right. It just, for my vision, the houses are getting really close to each other. But, you know, that's, that's, you know, it's within the ordinance or, sorry, within the... You're going to have to help me, Erin. So it's part of the R2?
Yes. So it's part of our adopted zoning code in the R2 district. I also will add that 7.5 is the minimum. So several homes I anticipate will be greater than 7.5, but that will be the minimum. So we do see surveys that come in closer to 10 feet on both. And then it's 7.5 on both sides. So in total, it's 15 feet between each house.
Yeah. But yeah, even those, those front yards are really small, but you know, it's what the homeowner, you know, or new residents want for a product. So it's up to them. But personally, for my taste and my vision for these developing areas. That was my only question. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't an exception or a variance.
All right. Kristi?
So Lori, it's not something that can happen on this, I mean, we're going to do here, but I agree that seven and a half feet, those houses are getting very close together. And so I don't know that it's necessarily what the homeowner wants or it's what the homeowner can get. I mean, it's what they're, what they're giving them. So... But also it's the market and, but I, I hear loud and clear what you're saying because I feel the same way about that. I want to just, for a comment, say the unique trail is very exciting. I think that is going to be great. I love the fact that we are looking at something that's just a little bit different, but how fantastic to add to our, our trail system. That might... I had one more and it just left. So why don't you go ahead and then we'll come back to you.
Yeah. I just have a couple of questions. Erin, can you walk me through how an area is determined for a trail versus a sidewalk? And I guess I'm kind of looking at that area off of Ironwood between Boulder and whatever is the next street to the west and just in general. I'm curious.
Sure. So I might defer to Dan. I'll give it my best try. The trail system that we tried to preserve are areas that offer a trail connectivity. So an area that the city maintains as opposed to a homeowner. So if you think about snow clearing of that yellow area, that will be the city's responsibility and will be designated as a trail. The other big difference is asphalt versus concrete typically, which we hear quite a bit that people feel a little bit different on those two amenities where a sidewalk feels a bit more neighborhood, where a trail feels like an area that you go to explore a bit. So the connection to Timber Creek and then into Ironwood puts it as part of our trail plan as opposed to a sidewalk. So part of the Parks Master Plan, an area that we've identified for a trail corridor as opposed to a sidewalk. But I'll defer to Dan if there's a more technical engineering version of that.
I think you hit it very well. That was a great explanation. I'll just add that a trail is generally trying to get you somewhere. You're trying to get to another destination. A sidewalk is trying to get you somewhere very locally between houses off the street. But a trail should give you an opportunity to get from point A to point B and the number of people will collect on it.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that. My other question, and you mentioned it and you just went over it real quickly, Erin, but it's kind of like what I refer to as the tail portion of the property in that far southwest corner. I know that the topography there is challenging to put it mildly, but is that open for future development? Will that become a future trail? What, what does that look like down the road?
Sure. So the properties that are kind of southwest of the new existing property line for Timber Creek, it's not anticipated that development is possible in those areas. So we took a look to see if we should keep that as an open street, but based on topography, it's not possible in that area. I've been working with Carver County and they're working on a regional trail plan right now and they've identified this area as potentially a corridor to get to Waconia. So in the future, this trail system could be included in more of a regional trail project. So they're eyeing up the area that is pretty steep in this area potentially for a trail corridor, just so there's not remnant property that can't be developed for some use. So I would anticipate that the county will be looking at this area pretty closely. But the area directly adjacent to this property, it's really tough topography, topographically. We also looked at a way to get this property down to Dalgrin, just knowing the number of cars and trips that will be here to hopefully get people out of this project more efficiently. But again, based on topography, the connection to Dalgrin, it's pretty slim, the area that we had, but it wasn't possible to make that connection.
Yes. So Courtney, I just want to make sure. Are you talking about when we look at this, like the Timber Lane? No, can you see here? It's the, it's literally this little tail on the southwest corner. It is page 12 out of the pack, out of this attachment to the packet.
Okay.
Okay, I can see it's the landscaping plan that I'm looking at. You can see it.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Erin, I have a follow-up question to what you said about the county being interested in that. Because the county is interested, does that mean it would infer it to be a trail connection? Would it have to be a paved trail through there?
All right, I missed that last little bit of...
Would it have to be a paved trail to be a trail connection that the county would be working on?
Potentially, yes. So I would anticipate that the area along the ravine changes drastically. But should they hook into the property potentially on an easement in this general area, I would anticipate a paved trail for commuting to Waconia.
Cool. Let's see. My only other question is probably more for the Summer Gate or development folks. You guys can anticipate it, but my question is if there is an affordability component to the homes in this area.
Well, this is Casey with Summer Gate. Really, the affordability is very similar to what Erin described of the projects next door with Meridian Fields to the north and Copper Hills kind of the south and to the east. The closest way kind of in modern development to get to affordability is either a higher density product. And here, the product that we would deduce to be the closest to affordability would be the townhome section. And that, I don't know how to answer that other than that's probably the closest thing to affordability. Unfortunately, most home product types now and the, and the cost of construction, you know, through the various things that... construction, you know, through the various things that are inputs into that process, you know, force homes to be almost 400,000 and up if it's single family and the finished product. And I think that just, that doesn't sound affordable to me, honestly. But that's as close to affordable on new housing construction as you, as you kind of get unless you go into the townhome projects.
Yeah.
Products. And then the product there, I'm not sure if, you know, someone from Lennar is on here, Josh Metzer, maybe he wants to chime in. But I, I'm not sure their price point exactly in there, but I'm sure they're going to be in the 300 somewhere.
Yeah. Hello, this is Josh Metzer here with Lennar. Thanks, Casey. Yeah. So affordability, that's a tough question right now, especially with this market. A major thing that's currently driving up, well, two major things that's currently driving up pricing on single families anywhere in Minnesota and probably anywhere in the country is, particularly here in Minnesota, where we have the Musa line, the Musa boundary is drawn in the Twin Cities, where we can get municipal sewer and water. Any available land within that boundary, the price on that land is going up and up and up by the day. So the price of land is going up, but lumber right now is skyrocketing. If you go to Home Depot and you try to buy a junky warped piece of pine two by four, it's like over $8 for that one board. And we're no different with the, with the lumber for our homes. So that's really driving prices. But ultimately, price-wise, yeah, so for our townhomes, we're right now, and of course, this is obviously subject to change based on market conditions as we get into this. But entry point on our townhomes is hopefully going to be around 300. Entry point on our, what's called our Heritage Series, that's our single-family modified split level product that we're also building right now in Oak Tree, probably around 375 entry point. And then our traditional single-family, which we're also building in Oak Tree, starting point around 460. And of course, that's, that's starting point, prices can go up from there based on whether or not someone is finishing a basement in the single-family homes. There's upgraded interior finishes they can choose from. But that's, that's hopefully the price points that we're gonna be targeting. And hopefully, they do not climb any higher. And lumber prices can get back under control. And we can flatten out from here.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you sharing the, the price points with me. And I certainly understand the, the industry drivers that the, the building industry and the housing industry is facing right now. Just my personal feeling, I think that this is, this is great to see, but it's disappointing that a project with 348 homes doesn't have a few options for folks that are just a little bit more, not in the market for a $460,000 house, or a, even a $300,000 townhouse that will have an accompanying association fee with it. But that's my personal feeling. Did you think of your question?
I did. And I agree with you in talking about the price points on these homes. I realize that some of this is market driven, some of it's materials driven. But it is disappointing. When I think of townhomes, I usually think of somewhat more on the affordable line. And to know that 300,000, and that's what it, it seems like, you know, we get an initial price that says it's gonna, we're gonna be 300 at this. And then by the time we look at what they're actually selling for, it's much higher. And I understand we can't control all that. But this, for this many homes, and then to see those really high price points is really tough. I do understand that the cost of land and what it is per acre and all that factors into it. But I don't know. I think, I think as council, we should have some discussions at some point about some of these things. And if there's any way that we can look at this. But that's for another day. I wanted to ask, I don't remember, did you talk about an association fee for the entire development besides the townhomes? Or was this not going to have one?
I believe it's not anticipated for the single family with just the villa, but I will be corrected by either Casey or Lennar at this point, if that's incorrect.
This, Aaron, this is Josh. Yeah, we don't anticipate, Aaron, you're correct, that we don't anticipate a homeowners association for the, the single family. The townhomes, they would be very minimal. Obviously, it's, you know, it takes care of snow removal, landscaping, and exterior on the home, and garbage removal, I believe, as well. I think we generally try to keep it, and I could be wrong, and I can verify this. And Aaron, I can send you the information if you want to distribute it to council. But we usually try to keep it to, you know, no more than $25 a month.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I'm glad to see that the, in development as a whole, isn't looking at an association. The townhomes with private drives and things like that makes sense. My only other question is, when we're looking at Timber Lane, and how that, I mean, it's dead, dead ended right now. But when I'm looking at those topography lines, it looks like it's getting pretty steep in there. Do we anticipate that that's going to be possible to run that westerly? Or is that going to be a sharp curve up to hit? So I mean, you're looking, it looks, it appears here that it looks like it's going to be getting steep rather quickly.
So Kristi, are you talking about the connection here?
Yep.
I probably am not the best equipped to answer that. Dan, do you want to jump in?
I didn't catch that directly. Could I, could I have that repeated?
Sure. So when we're looking at making connections at some point into the Lenzin property, where Aaron has the arrow right now, when I'm looking at those topography lines, they're starting to look a little close together. And, you know, is it going to be viable to, to keep that road going and to connect into that property in that location?
I would say yes, with some notable re-sloping. You know, the, those are, you're right, they're steep. But, you know, we, we consider like a three to one steep, and that gets closer to what those bluffs look like. So you can, you can slope it pretty tight, and then bring it up and flatten it out. So it's a, it's a good comment. It's a good, fair comment. But I would say with a grading plan, typically, yes. And we'll have to verify absolutely that it, it's going to be fine. But.
So when I, because when I look at it, it looks fairly, I guess, well, I'll say straight, rather than, once you go into Lenzin, it appears it may have to curve a little bit more. And did we allow enough curve there to be able to make that road work in the future?
Yeah. Let me get back to you on that one. A little, little more digging. I would say what's going to be at risk is, is lots on the south side of the road. The road will be able to squeak in there. But if they're trying to squeeze a lot in there, then they're, they're going to get challenged on that. So it would come down to grading out that area. But as it stands, I'm confident the road will come through. But whether or not it's optimized for building on both sides of it, it's a good comment.
All right. That's all I have.
All right. Anybody else think of any other questions? All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just two comments, council. One, just a commercial for your strategic plan, just identifying that the council did lay out a want to have a kind of a work session or kind of a meeting with Carver County CDA to talk about affordability, and then kind of identify the difference between affordability and housing choice. Because affordability has some certain components related to average median income or area median income. And, you know, housing choice relates to, you know, housing at different income or for different income levels. And I think we'll be able to get into some of those programs, because frankly, I think without a lot of digging, you'll find that cities and counties and CDAs really have to incentivize affordable housing, kind of quote unquote, in order to see that happen. There's not a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing for new construction. But again, a commercial for that, and something that Aaron and I will be talking about. And then the second piece, if, and Councilmember Henry alluded to it earlier. But Dan, for the benefit of the council, could you give a, an overview of the drainage situation that you discussed with Mr. Finkel last week? I anticipate that'll be an ongoing conversation. I just want to kind of get that out there officially, kind of on the record, and give the council an opportunity to ask questions, should they have any.
Sure. Aaron, if you want to drive the pointer to the area that he's generally concerned about, it's that last, it's that last phase of the development, right down, right down in that area, there's, there's a ravine that starts on his property. And his concern is, right now, it erodes a fair amount. And he brought that concern up, and he's, he's ultimately wanted to know what's, what's going to be the outcome here. And he, he is asking the question at the right time. I mean, the preliminary plat, it wouldn't have changed much. We've already heard his comment. We've changed a number of things on their drainage plan to redirect water away from the ravine he's concerned about, that had already been in place. But he's ultimately showing us that the ravine is crossing the property lines, and that they might need to factor that in in their, their plan. So we'll be taking those comments into account in the final, final plat reviews and their, their planning efforts for Phase Four. And we'll be visiting again with Bruce. Ultimately, I see some solutions here that are probably workable in align with his comments about trying to minimize the amount of drainage. And in this case, really trying to reduce the amount of drainage that's going on to his property. So I, I would say that's just the process working the way it's supposed to work. This planning commission was an opportunity to comment. He made the comments. It's been reviewed. I think there's going to be some solutions that can happen long term on this plat. And I feel, at the end of the day, we'll be able to address the comments and hopefully make them happy and get the work done.
Thank you.
Should I address it?
Yeah. Okay. I think we're at the post point where we could consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 118-21 approving the preliminary plat for Timber Creek.
A motion by Councilmember Henry?
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes unanimously. Welcome to Carver, guys. All right, moving on to item 8.2, the Planning Commission appointment. In my mind, we can make this real quick, Lori.
Or we could discuss it today.
No, no, I, I had some notes ready. I want to thank Kayla Pascoe and Daniel Belik for letting, you know, when we asked them, letting us know that they were available, they confirmed their interest, and were willing to volunteer not just their time, but their expertise and knowledge. But tough decision, really great to get the engagement from the community. But I would like to make a motion for Phil Schester, to appoint Phil Schester to the second alternate position on the Planning Commission with the term date that ends on 3/1/2022.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Sayer.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. So for any further discussion, I am, I'm just pausing, and I'm trying to pull up the city's website. Was the Planning Commission the one that we had, like 14 people, and we were talking about staggering the terms a little bit? And do we have that opportunity to do that right now?
Mayor Johnson, that's something you'd have to do by ordinance. And so the city attorney is working on that.
Okay.
So you should add something to the next few months to be able to make your request.
Desire to make things more. Okay, perfect. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes unanimously. I don't know that I repeated, we had a, the motion by Councilmember Sayer. Who had the second?
Joy.
Joy had the second.
The member McKnight did.
Councilmember McKnight. Okay. Perfect. All right. Mr. Merrick, do you want to give us a COVID-19 pandemic update?
I have nothing to add other than what I shared at the work session. So if there's any other questions, I'm happy to.
Do you want to just dive into your updates?
I don't have any.
Okay, okay. Councilmembers, Glenn, you want to go first?
We had our Planning Commission meeting where we approved the preliminary plat. And I don't know if I said that Reed Welch was elected to chair of the committee this term. So welcome aboard, and good luck, Reed. And I'd like to say that the Lions Pork Chop feast was good, as usual. Other than that, not too much going on. That's all we got.
All right. Thanks. Lori?
Hi.
Okay. Kristi?
I was, I was told, unconfirmed, that they did sell out for the Lions Pork Chop Dinner.
Oh, good.
So I, it's like an unconfirmed, but someone did mention that to me. So it sounds like it was successful. I was unfortunately not able to be there. But I'm glad that they were able to hold it. So it was nice to, for the city building, that they were able to get partially into the city building, and then outside and to go as well. So a little bit more normalcy compared to the last one that we did. I wanted to say thanks to Chad Shell, because we, as the Lions, are doing a landscaping project up at Lions Park. And he has been helping out with getting the plants that we've selected, so, and getting those for us. And then the Lions are going to be reimbursing the city for those. So we are going to do that project at the expense of the Lions. We have an HPC meeting, we, with a house here on Fourth Street. It, it was approved for windows. And we've been working a lot, again, on the HPC about guidelines and how we're working through those. The letter did also come out to the residents in the historic district about what it takes to, to come before the HPC, and if you're going to be doing any updates to your exterior of your home. So I was glad to see that go up. That's all I have. All right.
Joy?
I attended a Southwest Transit Commission meeting late in April. Just some stats on prime ridership so far in 2021 has gotten up to 50% of pre-pandemic levels. So that means about 200 riders, which is pretty good. And that's really the piece of transit that has weathered the pandemic a bit better than, obviously, the, the commuter buses into the city. So they are going to continue to expand it. So restoring Saturday service, as well as they're also looking at providing some park and fly services out of the Southwest Station in Eden Prairie. So that would mean you would take a prime vehicle to the Southwest Station, and then you could, then you would take a bus into the airport from there. So trying to offer some different services, that's what they're thinking of. So I know they're really good about posting things on social media about new services and things like that. So that's a great way to stay tuned. That's all I got.
All right. Thanks, Joy. A few updates with me. I had a call last Monday with Senator Coleman and Suzie Gerox. It's G E R O U X for the minutes. She is the administrator for the Senate's Capital Investment Committee. And it was a informational meeting where I shared information about the levy improvement project with her. And I've already met with Senator Coleman, but just trying to make sure that it's on the committee's radar for the 2022 bonding cycle. So if you guys remember, in 2019, we had the House Capital Investment Committee. That was a group that came out, and we did the walkthrough town. We're trying to get the Senate's version of that committee to come out, hopefully on their tour a little bit later on this fall. So we have that. Sorry, my phone just shut off. There was a Carver County Leaders Meeting. We heard updates from Lyndon Robgent from Carver County Public Works on all the stuff that's going on in the county. Go ahead, say it. Lyndon also spoke at the SWCTC, the Transportation Alliance meeting, which was last Friday. We also heard from the Deputy Assistant Secretary for the U.S. Department of Transportation, and then a representative from Senator Smith's office, speaking. Speaking of the U.S. Senate, you all may have heard that earmarks are a thing that's back. So for the last decade congressional, um, they're now, it's called Congressional Directed Spending, which is a longer way of saying earmarks are now back, it's now a thing. And what that does is that elects, allows our elected leaders at the federal level to have some say in the portion of the indiscretionary funds that are in the budget every year. So, um, every Senate, and every senator, every representative is able to put together a list for consideration of projects. I got a call last Friday from Zach Jacobs in Representative Emmer's office saying that our levy improvement project made Representative Emmer's list of earmarks, which is pretty exciting. Again, still in this marathon, not a sprint, but it's one step further, and I think it's really exciting, and to have visibility on a federal level is a really, really good thing. The Senate is a little bit behind the House's process in the earmarks, but they're working to put together, um, kind of like an online portal, where we will be able to share the details of our project. With that, one of the components that they're gonna be asking for are community letters of support. So last night, I sent out twenty emails to business owners in downtown Carver, residents, and then some of our former elected officials, so like Cindy Monroe, um, Mary Williamson, kind of fits in a couple of different categories. I reached out to Mike Webb, asking for them to write letters of support. I have commitments from about a half a dozen people, including Christie, to write a letter, and I got my first letter today from Shannon O'Brien, who wrote a really, really good letter about what it means for her financially to live in the hundred-year floodplain and what levy certification would mean. So, um, if anybody else is listening to this, if anybody who's sitting in this room would like to write a letter, I would take it. I think we can get a really, really good case from hearing from our folks in their own words what this project would mean to them. The only other thing that I have is just sending condolences to Brian Madison's family. His father passed away this morning. With that, I don't know that I have any other updates. I saw you make a note, like, maybe you have something? No? Okay.
I made a note.
Okay, all right. So with that, unless anybody has anything else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Glenn, you made all the motions tonight.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember Henry. I was informed we don't discuss this, uh, but could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Henry?
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye, Christie Mock.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight?
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right, motion passes unanimously. Have a good night, everybody.